Perfect, I sure appreciate it.
It's just pretty cool. This is one of the best jobs in the world. If not the best job, I would say.
This meeting will now come to order. The clerk will please call the roll.
Mayor Carlet?
Here.
Vice Mayor Binzbacher?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hunt?
Here.
Councilmember Patanna?
Here.
Councilmember Finn?
Here.
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
And Councilmember Dunn?
Here.
Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council Special Meeting of October 1st, 2019. The consent agenda consists of one item, and that is authorization to hold an executive session. And I have received no requests for removal from the city council. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
A motion and a second. Council, please vote. And the consent agenda passes unanimously. We will now adjourn to executive session.
This meeting will now come to order. The clerk will please call the roll.
Mayor Carlet.
Here.
Vice Mayor Vince Barker.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Patanna.
Here.
Councilmember Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Dunn.
Here.
Councilee is on Gray House.
Here.
Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council's special meeting of October 1st, 2019. We have one item on our study session agenda this evening, and it is charter amendment review process. And I will turn it over to our city attorney, Vanessa Hickman, to begin.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. Good evening. So this evening, we will be talking about city charter amendments, again, concepts and processes. At the request of council, this is a presentation on our charter, possible charter amendment concepts that could be pursued if the council provides direction to do so. With the 2020 election around the corner, a number of high-profile matters, including the presidential election, state ballot initiatives, and even locally with our general plan, we look to our charter as well to see if there are items which could and should be brought forward. Over the last year, some items have surfaced and have been brought to my attention, which I will cover in my presentation for further discussion and direction from the mayor and council. So the city charter, let's start with the framework for our city government. The authority for cities to establish a charter rests under Article 8 of the Arizona State Constitution. It grants authority for cities with a population of more than 3,500 to adopt a city charter. The city charter acts as the constitution of the city and the framework for local laws that are passed by the city council and then codified into city code. It provides the structure for Peoria city government. It can only be amended by a majority vote of the qualified electors of the city of Peoria. So what are some of the items in the city charter? The city charter covers the incorporation of the city and provides for the incorporation the powers of the city and the city government, the council manager form of government, as well as the council itself, its powers, number, elections, terms, salaries, vacancies, and council meetings. The city charter also establishes the duties and responsibilities of the city manager, administrative departments, and employees. It discusses ordinances and resolutions and their authority, elections, initiative, referendum, and recall. It has provisions for finance and taxation, ethics, municipal court, other general provisions, and importantly for later in our conversation, the charter review committee is established in the city charter. So what are some of the concepts that I'm bringing forward for discussion this evening? The first item, and I've italicized the items that are the concepts for discussion with more background below. So the first item would be the mayoral term. It would provide consistency and prospectively change the mayor's number of terms from two terms to three terms beginning in 2023. Under the city charter, council members may serve three consecutive four-year terms. Under the existing city charter, the mayor may serve two consecutive four-year terms. So the idea for discussion this evening is whether it would make sense to pursue an amendment that would change the mayor's terms from two to three to make it consistent with that of council members. So that is one of the concepts, and we can certainly talk about these as we go through. We can wait until the end, whatever is your desire.
So council, do you have any discussion? I think it might be easier for us to talk about these. You have three of them, is that correct?
Three with some additional points that I think it's worth us talking about that are in the charter.
Okay, so why don't we kind of take them in bits and pieces and start with this one? So this is just for, to provide consistency between the offices, and as you can see, it starts in 2023, so it is for our next mayor. It is not applying to, you know, the current seat, so.
Otherwise you.
Otherwise me, yes.
Can I just?
Yes.
I think most of us understand the history here, but for public that might be watching at home, can we kind of just briefly review how this got out of balance?
So my understanding is that there were no term limits, and at some point, there was a, there were a series of charter amendments that went to the ballot that were adopted that put in place term limits. The year someone sitting on the council now may know better than I or Rhonda. 2012. So in 2012, the term limits were put in place, and at that time, there was a different number of terms put in place for the council and for the mayor. Prior to that time, it was, there were no term limits.
Thank you.
I just thought there were, for a long time, term limits for the mayor. Am I wrong on that? But not for council?
That's correct.
Well, then, I have kind of the same question that he alluded to. Why was there a difference? Does anybody know what the thinking was on that? Why two for mayor and three for council?
You know, usually when things don't make sense, it's because it was political. And I think that that applies here.
Sure, okay.
Okay, and I'm happy to go on, and we can certainly discuss more.
Please, go ahead.
I certainly think it, I just, I think it certainly makes sense that they should be the same. It's never, I've never understood why it was different, aside from a political issue, but it, to me, it makes perfect sense that they should be the same for mayor and for council.
Looks like everybody's agreeing to that. Really, common sense.
Okay, great. I'm glad I started with that one. So, yes, exactly. Thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to the next item. So the next item is partial terms. The overall concept for discussion is whether partial terms would count as a term. Currently, partial terms for council members do count as a term. My next slide is going to show you the language, because I think the language is very important. Essentially, it's if it's over two years of a period of time that you're serving as a council member, then that would count towards your limit in number of terms. So the idea would again be to provide consistency between the mayor and council, and it would need a modification of the partial term charter language, which I'd like to share with you. I apologize for the wordiness of this slide, but this is something I have read more times than I can even share with you. But it's important to read the language in the charter, because the mayor's term is something that we, I think, does merit least addressing and cleaning up, even if there's not a desire to look at eliminating partial terms from being factored into the overall term count. So if you look at the language for the mayor, "In the event a person serves as mayor for more than two years of a term that some other person is elected for, such portion of the term shall count as one term for purposes of the total number of terms served." So that language is definitely subject to interpretation. When you look at council vacancies, if there are 740 or more days left on a term for the mayor, then that goes to an election, and that person is elected for that seat. But the language with "some other person is elected for", we're still trying to reconcile the intent of that language and whether the original intent was to have it consistent with council terms, which if you turn to council terms, "In the event a person is selected to fill a vacant term by appointment pursuant to this charter, such vacant term shall not be included." So appointments are not included. If it's 740 or less days, it's not included. "In the event a person is selected to fill a vacant term by election pursuant to this charter, such vacant term shall be included as a term." So again, the way the charter is currently written, if it's 740 or more days for a council member, that position, that seat is filled by a special election, and so that partial term would count. So the question for everybody to ponder is whether we want to look at partial terms. Again, this came up in looking at the language of the mayoral term and what that partial term language actually meant. Was the intent for it to mean the same as the council language, but it wasn't written that way? I think it certainly merits cleaning up either way, but I did want to raise this as a concept for discussion whether there is, you know, any desire to no longer count partial terms as a term.
So we're looking at two issues here. One of them is whether we want to have the mayor and council have the same conclusion when it comes to partial terms.
Correct.
And then the second thing is whether a partial term, whether elected or appointed, should count as a full term.
Correct.
So we've got those two issues at hand. So council, do you have any comments or discussion? So it is whether someone is appointed or elected to a partial term, whether that partial term should count as a full term. Regardless of how they got there. We could say regardless of that. You can leave the 720 days in there and make an exception, but... But if you do that, then a person who fills a seat, who helps the council by filling a seat, if something happened to me and the vice mayor had to take this seat, then that person is penalized by taking that seat. That person loses the ability to have two or three full terms. So that's the consideration of someone who would have to take that seat, that they would lose a term.
If they serve for more than two years, correct?
Am I reading that right?
For council, correct. For mayor, it is unclear. I would, I would say that the intent for mayor was that it be more than two years, but the confusing part is the language that says "some other person is elected for", because they're serving, in the event a person serves as mayor for more than two years of a term that some other person is elected for, they're going to be elected for that seat unless it's somewhere between that 730 days, which is two years, or 740 days, which is when it goes to an election. Because the mayor's term, the mayor's seat, if it's less than 740 days, the vice mayor would become mayor, right? So there's no election. The vice mayor fills that seat. But if it's more than 740 days on the term, then it goes to a special election. So the person would be elected. It's not some other person is elected. It would be that person that's elected. So the language is just very unclear.
Okay, so I think our discussion here is how we want the, what the intent of this should be, and then let them draft it to capture what we're thinking, correct?
Right, right. We need to decide what we would like the intent to be, and then they can clarify the language, whatever that might be. So, we don't want to penalize people. Okay, so, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. We don't want to penalize people for stepping in to fill a term and fill a need and serve the citizens on behalf of the city. I also think whatever we do, it should be clear, clearer than this, and consistent.
Consistent with mayor and council?
Mayor and council.
I agree.
Thank you.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
Okay.
Should be the same. And I don't think anybody should be penalized for stepping in. I mean, especially the mayor. That's just wrong, to penalize somebody a whole term.
Okay, do you?
Yes, I think it should be consistent. And I think that if, oh, if someone steps in, they should get the full term.
Okay.
So is there a scenario, I guess I should ask you this question, is there a scenario where someone could be stepped, they either were appointed, or they stepped in to fill a role, that would be greater than two years?
Yes, they, there could be a council member or mayor that leaves office shortly after being elected, and then there would be a special election. So if they're four-year terms, there could be a scenario where someone is elected for three years, they're elected for two and a half years. The appointments would only be up into, up to the 740 days. So, I mean, we can just call it two years, and it's 730 days, but, so anything less than two years would generally be an appointment. It would be an appointment.
So that would be the, what happened in the Pine District recently?
Mm-hmm. I get it. That was my, I'm processing look. I wasn't confused. I was just processing. But subtle.
Yeah, I was just trying to help.
Okay, I got it.
Okay, so what, everyone is kind of leaning towards, did I, if I heard that right, they should, they should be the same with mayor and council?
I believe so, yes.
And then they should not be penalized a term?
Are we keeping the two years?
Are we keeping the two years? The 720 days, whether they have to be run for election? Oh, okay, so we...
That's a completely different issue, isn't it?
Is it in this one? I mean, that's...
Yes, the language for council right now is if it's more than a two-year term, that counts towards one of their three terms. So the question is whether you no longer would like that to count if it's longer than two years.
Right, so that's regarding the terms, not whether they have to run for election at a certain point or not. Are you good with that, or did you want to talk about that, something else?
No, I'm good.
Okay, anyone else? Any more discussion?
So what are, what are you good with? Say again, make it clear.
Making their, making parity between the language for council and mayor, and if someone fills a vacant seat, that that is not considered a full term for them.
Okay, I agree.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Can you go back one slide?
Certainly.
So would it help to clarify if council members may serve three, three consecutive full, four-year terms?
Certainly, and I think, as you can see from the charter language, we're just going to have to look at it and make sure that it's clear, so.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, let's move on to the next concept. The next concept for discussion would be to include a reasonable automatic cost of living adjustment for the mayor and council members. As you're aware, Article 2, Section 9 of the charter describes a process for the citizens' commissions on salaries for elected officials to conduct compensation reviews to adjust pay levels for the duties and responsibilities of the position of mayor and council. Any change of five and one-tenth percent or more goes to the electorate. If there was a desire to move forward with some sort of cost of living adjustment, definitely would need more discussion with city staff and the Charter Review Committee to come up with a proper index, but the intent would be to tie it to a commonly-held national index. You know, by way of reference, an index is a collection of data that serves as the baseline for future reference. An inflation index is an economic tool used to measure the rate of inflation in the economy. The CPI for all urban consumers could be one gauge to determine how much an individual's cost of living has gone up over the course of a year. In this way, the change in CPI can be directly tied to making a cost of living wage adjustment to the base salary. It does appear that local indexes include more fluctuation, while national indexes appear to be more consistent. That being said, there are certainly other indexes out there which could be looked at. There's, gross domestic, gross domestic product is another national indicator, GDP, but it is not frequently used for cost of living adjustments. Other indexes include the Employment Cost Index. It measures the changes in employers' costs of wages and benefits for employees. You're seeing that used more frequently, and it's a quarterly index that's published by the U.S. Department Labor's Bureau of Labor and Statistics to measure the change in cost of labor. So again, a further analysis of the index would be necessary by city staff and the Charter Review Committee, but the intent would be for the index to be relatable and which we would have confidence could be the appropriate reflection of the market and consistent with the duties and responsibilities of the council. We would also look at an allowance for a cap, placing an upper limit on the cost of living adjustment. And again, that would require further research and analysis, so with that, I'll...
Okay, so, so what is before us right here is, is a cost of living adjustment put into the city charter that would happen for mayor and council every year? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So it's automatic cost of living adjustment?
It is.
Okay.
So I have a point of clarification. I guess this would be for Rhonda. If we have a reasonable automatic cost of living adjustment for mayor and council members, would there still be a need to keep the citizens' commission on salaries for elected officials?
The citizen, the salaries for elected city officials, they look at pay increases for the elected officials, and that's based on a lot of the salaries and what the pay increases are for staff. They look at a lot of different things, so I would say that it would, there would be a need to keep both.
Okay, thank you.
And I will just tag on to what Rhonda was saying. The cost of living adjustment would be to adjust for inflation, and the citizens' commission does look at the duties and responsibilities of the council, compares it to other local councils and their duties and amount of time spent working. So it, I think it would be two independent concepts.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So for clarity, rather than the 4.99 or 5%, which they pretty much always is what they recommend, it would be probably presumably higher than that, and it would not have to go to a public vote, because the public vote would be here authorizing that. Is that correct?
Correct. The public vote is called out in charter based on a citizen, the citizens' commissions on salaries. Any recommendation of 5.1% or above would go to the electorate. This would be a separate provision in that section of the code that just provides for a cost of living adjustment. I will tell you, it will go to the voters, because any charter amendment must go to the voters, so the concept and the amendment would have to be approved at the outset before it could be put in place.
But that's what I meant. It's a one-time vote?
Yes.
That they are changing the charter to accept that that can be a fluctuating over 5% doesn't have to go to the voters each time?
Yes, that is correct.
That's what I would like. Instead of strapping their hands, well, it needs to be 6% or something.
So this is not about the citizens' committee?
No, I know.
Oh, okay.
But it would be automatic that if it was 6%, it's 6% or 5.95 or whatever, it wouldn't have to go to the voters at that point.
Do you mean if it was the cost of living increase?
Yes.
Oh, well, that's true, but certainly cost of living increases would be considered much less than that. I think they, they would be like in the 2% to 3% increase range.
So we're going to go backwards in ourselves?
No, we would still have what we currently have with the citizens' committee. They would need every two years.
That's what I meant, adding to that, 2%.
Yes, yes. This would be completely separate from that.
Let's be kind of clear on this. This is going to be something that's, that is taken into consideration with the citizens' commission, right? They're going to be looking at this and saying, "Look, there's a 2% cost of living increase, so we're not going to recommend 5%. We're going to recommend potentially 3 to make it the 5." So the reason that I'm bringing this up is because just from, you look at this and you look at it from the eyes of the voters, we're not trying to do anything for ourselves that isn't done for our employees. I'm a firm believer in COLA increases, right? You get employees that start just kind of getting behind. They actually have less spending money than they did when they started, because they haven't caught up with COLA. So I'm a big supporter of that. I just want to make sure that nothing that's being discussed here would be any different than what we do for our employees. And I, again, I'm a strong supporter of it. It's just the language of this and the way that it, the optics of it potentially could, could be misconstrued. So I want to be very clear with anyone that's watching at home that this isn't anything that is outside of normal practice with the city. It just simply codifies kind of...
Mr. Tyne, would you like to address that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and I believe that is exactly right.
Okay.
To be clear, that we look very closely each year at employee compensation for a number of different factors, of which we look at the cost of living as one of those major points. If this were to be applied, this would likely be lower than what we have seen historically as far as compensation increases for public sector salaries throughout the entire valley, not just Peoria. So this is a lower amount of an increase that we would expect annually than what you're necessarily seeing for public sector employees.
And then the citizens' commission would look at that and say, "We're recommending this number", but it would not be lower than what the COLA was based on this index. Is that correct? Sorry. So each year, this index would be applied, and if the citizens' commission was looking at the salaries and making a recommendation, the, any increase wouldn't be lower than this index that we're looking at. It would potentially either be flat or higher than the index.
I think it would really... I think it would really matter. You know, one of the items that probably is worth mentioning is the citizens' commission doesn't meet every year.
Understand that.
And so it really depends on the frequency of when they meet. My guess is that what's happened in the past is you're seeing those higher amounts because it's reflective in numerous years that has passed by.
Sure.
And this is just adjusting for a COLA that is very much similar to what you're seeing in the American economy. But I can't tell you exactly the differential based off of how often they meet.
Would it be the same index that the city uses for the rest of the employees when you're looking at what? For merit and cost-of-living? It'd be the same index, correct?
Mayor and council, when we go through our financial forecast, we commonly use the CPI Urban Users Index. We find that as a better indicator.
Okay. And I'm asking these questions. Again, I'm supportive of COLA increases. I just want to make sure that anyone who's watching at home understands kind of the whole picture of it. So I don't mean to...
Yeah, I think that's very important.
...muddy the waters.
And hopefully, when the citizens' committee for salaries on elected officials meets, they're gonna take into consideration the amount of salary that is being paid currently. And they're gonna decide how that works with our population, with, you know, other cities, with all of those things. They're gonna take all of that into consideration, you know, cumulatively.
You said that way better than I did.
Okay.
Well done.
Thank you very much. And so it sounds as if we're supportive of a COLA. Is that, am I hearing that? Do you have some questions still?
Is it possible to go, say, we're getting a 5% raise now. I think it's about that. Is it possible to go lower than that?
It is not possible to go lower than what the citizens' commission recommends every two years, as they currently have. This is completely separate from that. They meet every two years and they decide based on the comps in the area and the amount of work that people are doing and the amount of our population. They take all of that into consideration and they decide if we're making a salary that they deem appropriate. And then, in addition to that, this would be a cost-of-living increase that just happens automatically based on what is occurring in the economy, the national economy or the local economy or both. It's not either/or, but the cost-of-living increase is typically, you know, just a couple percent.
Harder.
Okay. Everyone okay?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to elections to discuss the next charter amendment concept, which would be to clarify votes cast means votes cast and not ballots cast. So we've been getting into some complicated language and history in our discussion this evening, and we will continue that trend as we start talking about ballots cast versus votes cast. So please feel free to stop me at any time and we can go in deeper. City Charter, Article 9, Section 6 states, "At the primary election, any candidate who shall receive a majority of all the votes cast at such election shall be declared elected to the office for which he is a candidate." The goal is to distinguish the intent is to only tabulate legal votes actually cast for legally-eligible candidates in that candidate's race. It would exclude ballots and other votes that were not actually cast in that race, including overvotes. Overvotes are essentially multiple votes for that same seat. So that ballot would not count. If there's one seat and someone votes for three candidates, that ballot would no longer be an eligible ballot. Undervotes, where there's a ballot that is not marked and they did not cast a vote for any legally-eligible candidate. It would also eliminate unqualified write-ins. So if there's a name written in for a write-in and that write-in is not a legally-eligible candidate, those ballots would no longer be tabulated towards the overall total. So again, the purpose is to clarify that only votes for qualified candidates in that race will be used to calculate the majority. So a little bit of additional history is that in 2016, and 2014, I'm sorry, 2014, our code was amended. The code at one time did say ballots cast. So we had a charter that said votes cast. We had a code that said ballots cast. In 2014, the code was amended. And I'm looking at Rhonda to confirm it. Okay, thank you. So the other one was 2014. So 2017 was when the code was updated. So it was not that long ago. There is a long history with Peoria running elections and tabulating all ballots, including over and under votes. So the options could be to clarify the language in the charter, although the charter already says votes cast. It could be to adopt an ordinance which clarifies the intent of the charter to mean votes cast means votes cast and not ballots cast, which we can definitely do. We can have a council communication outlining a little bit of the history with the goals and objectives and have very clear language in the code, which is similar to the bullet point, only tabulate, you know, tabulating legal votes actually cast for legally-eligible candidates in that candidate's race. So I'd like to open it up for discussion and questions. But again, we could possibly go the ordinance route, see if there's a desire to do so. And to further bolster the ordinance, a legal opinion that's issued by my office, which confirms that votes cast means votes cast and is supported by the charter and the code.
So what's before us is actually nothing. I mean, what it says is votes cast. So unless you want to change it to ballots cast, which would mean we would count over and under votes, but as it stands right now, it says votes cast. So the amount of people who actually voted in the election decide on the outcome of that election.
For each individual candidate, not just those who voted.
Correct. So it's no longer...
That makes so much more sense than the other has ever been. That means like duh.
Yeah. Anyone else?
Is it votes cast?
So what, so what are we doing with this? Is it a charter amendment or...?
So I think as quickly as November, we could put together an ordinance for your consideration that would clarify votes cast means votes cast and modify the code.
So it's not a charter amendment because that's what our charter already says?
Yes. As we began, as we started looking at this issue, again, the concept has bubbled up numerous times over the past year and a half. So it was a charter amendment concept initially. And looking at, at the issue, I think an ordinance could satisfy where we need to go if that's your inclination.
I just think that's huge. It just makes sense.
Yes.
So if there are two people running for election, the person with the largest number of votes wins the election.
The majority.
The majority. So it still has to be 50% plus one.
Correct. So majority is defined as, as over 50%. So you round up to 50, it's 50 plus one. So it's, the majority wins outright. If there are three candidates in a race for one seat and there is no majority, then the two highest vote-getters would go on to the, essentially to the runoff. But I will tell you that clarifying this language and looking at votes cast rather than ballots cast as the majority, you know, I hate to give you absolutes, but it will likely, you know, reduce the number of runoffs that are necessary, just due to the number of ballots that are often cast in some of these elections that are not, that are over or under votes or for ineligible candidates.
Right. People writing in Mickey Mouse?
Yes, correct.
That no longer will count.
No, that will no longer count.
It's refreshing.
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Just a question, Mayor. Thank you. So if there are only two people running, then the one with the most votes wins that election?
If there are two people running, you still need a majority.
You still have to have 50% plus one.
You still have to have a majority, 50% plus one.
Okay.
Yes. But I, again, I think with this change, you will see that there, it's more likely that there will not be a runoff if you're just tabulating the legal votes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So if there was not 50, I'm sorry, may I?
No, please.
If there was not 50% one and there were only two running in the primary, those same two would just come back at it in the general election?
Yes.
But the chances are smaller because you don't have to count ballots that were not written.
It would be kind of unusual not to have two people running and one of them get 50% plus one, I think. I mean, it's possible, but I don't think it's likely.
I'm sorry. And you're saying it's, it's more likely that there's a majority?
Yes.
Yes. I think based on our review historically, that's what it would likely look like going forward if we tabulate votes in accordance with votes cast rather than ballots cast, in accordance with the language in our charter.
Which we should be doing unless we change our charter.
Yes. So if, if the direction is there, we can move forward with preparing an ordinance for your review and consideration as soon as possible. And that way, we can clarify this immediately so that the issue is resolved and we have some finality.
Okay. Everyone okay with that?
Definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Okay. Another matter that had risen to our attention over the time we've been looking at the charter was the issue of primary elections, general elections, when they're held. So one of the questions was, is it possible to not hold a general, the first question actually was the second bullet point. So can the primary election serve as the general election if there are no more than, if no more than two candidates file nomination petitions for each vacancy in office? And our charter does allow us the flexibility for a primary to serve as the general. It certainly doesn't mean, we just talked about this with the last slide, that there won't be a runoff. If, if nobody gets the majority, it's still gonna go to the next election. But our primary election can serve as the general election and frequently does. There was a change in state law for non-charter cities in 2015 that gave them, essentially gave them this authority and told them that they can use their primary elections as general elections. But our charter already gives us that flexibility. Another question that was raised was about holding the general elections in November. So again, we're often holding our general elections for council seats in, in August. So holding it in November rather than August if no more than two candidates file nomination petitions for each vacancy in office. So in reading our charter, we have the authority and discretion to do that. That seems as if it would be more of a policy direction to move forward with not having the general occur in, in August. Some things to remember is, are, my apologies, some things to remember are that it would have an impact. It would lead to a March runoff. So whether there's a desire for the city to hold their general elections in November or to, you know, primarily keep them in August, I wanted to open that up for consideration because there have been a lot of discussions about that over the past year. So.
So the objective in holding an election in November is that you have a larger voter pool normally.
Yes.
You know, more people vote in the general election. But in our case, if, if there was a runoff and then you have to wait until March, it just becomes out of the ordinary. Not very many people vote in March. And so you, you know, still don't have that same number of diverse population to come out at that second election.
That's correct.
So it doesn't really help in any way.
It would be a lot more expensive, too.
Thank you, Mayor. It would be a lot more expensive, too, because we'd be doing a special election in March versus the regular norm. That would be reason enough for me to not want to do that.
Thank you.
I agree.
Yes. Councilmember Patana?
So my question is, the primary election can serve as a general election if no more than two candidates file nomination. But that would be only if one of the candidates got the majority, 50% plus one. Is that correct?
Well, the primary election, are you talking about in August or in November?
November.
In November. So if there are only two candidates that file their nomination petitions, then you would hold your election in November. But if no one received the majority, yes, it'd go to a runoff in March.
Okay. So, do you mind?
No, please.
Okay. I, I like having the, I like having the November with the more voter turnout. I'm very supportive of making sure that we get the people out. So just for my mind, give me an example here. Bill and I are both running for the same office. It's just the two of us, right?
Mm-hmm.
How does one of us not get 50% plus one? How would it possible go to any type of a runoff?
I'm going to turn to Rhonda because she and I have both been doing a lot of math equations over the past few days. So...
I love those.
Yes.
If your vote span is approximately less than 200 votes, then you're gonna go for a runoff election. So you're, you're, you're too close in your election, in your votes. So you'll have to go for a runoff.
Why? If there's a, give us the, give me the math behind that, that if 1,000 people vote and we're only counting correct votes that were cast, if Daffy Duck doesn't get included, poor Mickey, Mickey's out, right? Somebody votes for both of us, that gets thrown out. Somebody votes for, votes for neither of us, that gets thrown out. So there's, let's say there's 750 votes that are split between just the two of us. How would I ever get to a runoff where there's not 50% plus one?
So if you have 1,000 votes...
250 people vote for Daffy Duck. The rest of the votes go to, Daffy had a really good year. So the rest of them, 750 votes, are split between Bill and I. Sorry, Bill, in my example, I went. So I, I get, I get 50% of the 750, and in my head, I can't do it that quick. 375? Okay. So I get 376 votes. Bill gets 300. I can't get 376. And he get 375, right?
He gets 375.
So I got, I got 375 and he got 374. Let's just say that. I would have 50% of the votes cast plus one, would I not?
If you each got 375, wouldn't you have...
No, no. So the, oh, so are you saying that the only way this could go to a runoff is if we each get exactly the same votes?
I think in that scenario that you're outlining. But I think in the...
Give me the real-world scenario then, because I'm just not getting it.
The problem with that equation is that you both have a majority. So you, the, the way that it's calculated is you have to add the, the number of votes together and then divide it by two. So when you add it together, you get 750, but then you divide it by two and you get roughly 374. Well, you both have more than 374 votes, so you would both have to go to a runoff election.
Why is that the calculation? Why is that the way that's tabulated?
Doesn't make any sense mathematically.
Is there a...
That's what the statute, that's the statute, yeah.
Arizona state statute says you have to divide it by two like that?
Right.
You don't just take the amount of votes and say the, the amount of votes is more, a higher percentage than the other one?
Right. You don't, it's, it's not the larger amount of votes, it's the percentage.
And it, there is actually a formula in state statute. It calls out and that you divide by two to get the majority. So it is a formula that's laid out.
Okay. I gotta, okay, so I have 750 votes.
All right.
There's 750, I'm sorry? 800? Okay. You should have been a teacher. So I've got 800 total votes cast between Bill and I, right? Majority is gonna be 400. So 50%, it's gonna be, the 50% mark is gonna be 400. So one of us, in order to win the election, has to have at least 401 votes, correct?
Right.
So if all 800 votes went between Bill and I, how would it not be possible, unless it was 400 to 400, that one of us doesn't have 401 and the other have 399? This is a part I don't get.
So the scenario is 399 to 401.
It really depends on, it depends on the, the numbers and...
Give me one of your numbers where this wouldn't work.
Say that again?
Give me one of your numbers where this wouldn't work. I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I just think we need to understand this.
And I don't know. I only did, I mean, I can try to see.
How about if, Mayor and council, if it, if, if this will indulge you, is perhaps what we could do is we'll go back, do research and see if there's any type of scenario where this could occur.
Okay.
The examples that probably would, you would see in statute is if there is some concern during the election that the margin error is so slight that the... concern during the election that the margin error is so slight that there is risk of it triggering a recount. And that's probably what we'll have to just do the research on if there's something that triggers in that way. If not, though, we could go under the general direction that you are interested in having that roll to November. But, so if that works for you, what we'll say is if you, the intent is that the council would like this, the general election to be, the election to have if there's only two candidates, we could follow that, but then do the research to make sure that we're on solid legal ground.
Because the, because the consensus seems to be that we do not want to move to a March runoff in any case.
That's exactly right, Mayor, yes.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify, though. If we found that there was no other scenario, say, and the runoff isn't possible with two people, then I would want to go to a general. I just want to say that.
In November, I'm with you, because if, if the, if the risk of going to March is only in the case of an exact tie, I think the benefit of having it in November and getting more people out voting outweighs the March situation. That's my opinion.
Right. I have a feeling it's not going to be just an exact tie, though. But, but we need to, we need to know why. We need to know how. Yes.
Well, in an election where you have three council members and the mayor up for reelection, which happens every few years, it seems unlikely that at least one of those, say, I'm up for reelection and there are going to be two people challenging me. That automatically means you have to have a primary. So I don't really know what we're talking about, because I think the chances of that, you're talking about a perfect storm there that would have everybody that's running just have one person opposing them.
We're only, we're only talking about the scenario where there's only two candidates, so.
Okay.
So the.
It hardly seems.
She's saying that there's going to be other people who are also running in that same election, so we're going to have to have, like, you know, from different districts.
It's always going to be that way.
So we're going to have to always have the August election anyway.
We always, it's never going to be just two people running, I guess. We know that historically.
But, but there could just be two people running for one seat, and those people just, in this case, would not run in the August election.
So they, so they're just not in the primary?
They're just not in the August.
I thought we were just trying to save money by not having a primary. That's why we were doing this.
We're trying, we're trying to have the vote when most of the people are going to be voting.
Okay. But in the case of three people running for the same office, they have to have, they have to be in the August election. So we're not saving money, we're just doing something which I don't see much use for. But, but as long as it does, as it does no harm, I guess it doesn't matter, but I don't think that we're saving much of anything to do that. I think it's very rare that we wouldn't have an August election just because of how many people are wanting to run for one office. No.
Yes, and understood. And again, this does merit further research, and we'll go back and talk about it and bring it back in front of you. The good news is, it would not be a charter amendment, so this would just be direction to staff on how to conduct elections under certain circumstances going forward. Yes, okay. We will, we will do that, and we will bring it back in front of you. Okay, the last item to discuss would be to increase the time to fill a vacancy to 20 days. And let me give you some background. So currently, if there's a vacancy occurring 740 days, there's that number again, 740 days or more prior to the next regular election, then there is someone that must be appointed within 12 to 15 days to fill that seat until the results are in from that election for the permanent council member or mayor for the seat. So the question is, would you like us to look at increasing the time to fill the vacancy to 20 days? This did come up over the last year. We did have to work on a process to have the appointment occur within 12 to 15 days. That is a very expedited timeframe. There's an application that must be submitted by those that are interested in being appointed, questions that have to be created for the candidate, a special council meeting that must be set with all the appropriate notice and preparation. And so it all happens very quickly. We definitely need to update our council policy memo to make sure we're in accordance with these timelines. But it, I think it may be beneficial for the process, just based on our experience, to increase that timeframe to 20 days if there's an inclination to do so, to give a little bit more time to fill the vacancy.
Would you like to make a comment?
My head nod didn't suffice. I'd be very supportive of it, very supportive of it.
I agree. Makes sense.
I'm supportive of it.
Councilmember?
Would it be 12 to 20 days, or would it just be up to 20 days?
And that's direction from you and what your desire would be. The suggestion would be up to 20 days, but we could certainly look at language.
I think that 12 to 15 probably comes from weekends and things to make sure that you, so I don't think there would be a need to, to just have it as up to 20 days would be the best approach, I think.
Yes, Councilmember?
Well, okay, are we done with this one?
No, we're not.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry, my brain's on the other one.
Okay, so it sounds like there's consensus to move that to up to 20 days.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Did you have a question, then?
If we can go back to the, the August-November thing, I think that it's sticky because some people are having, for one thing, a shorter amount of time to run for office. So whatever they're doing to campaign is shorter than those that get to go ahead to November. And you've stressed that we have a bigger voter pool in November. Okay, well, just because two people are running against me, why don't I get to do automatically the larger voter pool? I just think it opens us up for people to criticize, well, why did he have to do this when I didn't, when she didn't have to do that? And I, I just think it's a sticky wicket to go that way. I, I guess I just feel that everybody does the same. Everybody does a primary election, and whoever moves forward goes to the general election. I don't think it's that big a deal. I, I just don't think we, I, I really doubt we'd ever have an election where nobody had three people running. Don't, that's not happened in my existence. And I just think we open up a mess to say, some people are getting voted on here, and, and some get to wait, and they have so much longer to campaign. And they're going to get the big group, and I had to have the ones where nobody shows up. I'm not saying I even agree with that, but I do think that, given the, the way we live these days, that that's really opening us up to criticism.
Okay, so, so how we're, kind of, how we kind of left this is they're going to come back to us with more information.
Just consider that.
So we'll have another time to talk about it with a little bit more data.
And that's certainly something we will factor in and research, is maybe historically over the last 10 years, how many times could that possibly have happened? So we'll.
I just think having two different elections opens us up to the accusation of prejudice, giving somebody more benefit than somebody else.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, the next item is to discuss the city charter amendment process. So the process itself, the Charter Review Committee. As I mentioned before, it is established in charter. Nine members total. They're, they are appointed by the mayor with the recommendation of the appointees by each council member from their district, and the mayor then selects three at-large members. They have a number of responsibilities set forth in Article Six, I'm sorry, Article 17 of the city charter. But for this discussion, it includes review of proposed amendments to the charter referred by the council to the Charter Review Committee. So they're charged with going through every 10 years and doing a comprehensive look at the charter, but also, as necessary by the council, if the council refers charter amendments to them, they can then look at those charter amendments, work through the process, and refer them back to council. Going forward with the timeline, what that would look like would be the November 12th city council meeting. There could be a charter amendments resolution for those items you would like us to move forward with, that the resolution could refer certain amendments to the Charter Review Committee for further analysis and review. Also, in October and November would be the appointment of the Charter Review Committee, and so that would need to occur so that the Charter Review Committee could begin meeting in November and December. There would be meetings to go over the amendments, go into more detail, look at some of the items that we discussed this evening. January to February of 2020 would be a public comment period, probably a Charter Review Committee meeting after the public comment meeting, or a public comment period to incorporate some of those comments and, and review feedback. Then in March or April, there would be a final report to council with the results of the work of the Charter Review Committee and the proposed amendments in their final form. June 16th, 2020 would be a council meeting to call the election with the specific charter amendments on it. And then November 3rd, 2020 would be the general and citywide election.
Thank you.
Yes. So next steps, we've had a great conversation this evening. I know we've gone into, had a lot of feedback on these items, taken a lot of notes. These are the items we discussed this evening. The, you can see the list up here. I think we have pretty clear direction on all of them, so I don't know if you'd like us to go through them again right now, but.
I don't think so. I don't think we need to.
I'd like to do this all over.
Thank you.
Absolutely. November. We can definitely do that. In fact, some of it will. So we will move forward based on your direction and recommendations this evening and be back in front of you in November with some proposed amendments that could be adopted by resolution by the mayor and council and sent to the Charter Review Committee. So with that, if there are any more questions, I'm happy to answer them, but that's all I have this evening.
Okay, so council, it is now our job to decide how we are going to staff the Charter Review Committee. So our, our charter is very clear on how we do it, how many members there are, and obviously, we have some great dates to work backwards from the November election. So what I am asking from each of you is for you to submit to me a nominee from your district, from each one of your districts, one nominee, yes. So just to give you a little history, the Charter Review Committee has, has only been in place since, I believe, 2016. Prior to that, anything could just go, you know, as a charter change on the ballot. This is, this is really a great way for our citizens to weigh in on our charter and any changes that are made to it. And then they will recommend to us what they deem we should send to the ballot. And we will have that, of course, on our November city council agenda. So if I can give you 10 days, that would be October 11th. Would you guys be able to submit a name to me by October 11th? Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And then the committee will be put together and, and staffed by the city manager's office and the city attorney's office. Okay, great. Any further discussion, questions? All right, then we are adjourned until our 7:00 PM meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the time. Thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
The mayor and city council welcome you to the Peoria City Council meeting. As a courtesy to others, please silence all phones. If you would like to address an issue that is on the agenda, or if you would like to speak to the council regarding a non-agenda item, please complete a speaker request form, which can be found in the front lobby of the Peoria City Council chambers, or in the tray to the left of the speaker's podium. Please place the completed speaker request form in the second tray to the left of the speaker's podium, labeled "Request to Speak." All speakers will have three minutes to complete their comments. A countdown clock is easily visible on the left side of the wall behind the City Council dais. Only items listed on the agenda may be addressed by the council. Since items presented as part of a speaker's request have not been listed on the agenda, and due to the requirements of open meeting laws, the council will be unable to respond to items presented as part of the speaker's request. However, please be aware that your comments will be noted. The speaker's name will be called to speak at the appropriate time, in the order that the forms were received. Thank you for your interest and participation in the Peoria City Council meeting.
The Peoria City Council meeting will now come to order. Please rise for a moment of quiet reflection and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council Member Dunn.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The clerk will please call the roll.
Mayor Carlet.
Here.
Vice Mayor Binzbacher.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Patana.
Here.
Councilmember Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Dunn.
Here.
Council liaison Great House.
Here.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council meeting of October 1st, 2019. The first item on the agenda this evening is a presentation. As part of the world's largest women's patriotic service organization, our local auxiliary is dedicated to supporting the American Legion and honoring the sacrifice of those who serve by enhancing the lives of our veterans, military, and their families. Tonight, I will be presenting a proclamation recognizing the 100-year anniversary of the American Legion Auxiliary. At this time, I would like to welcome Tammy Early, President, and Adrina Rosales, Junior President of the American Legion Auxiliary Unit 62, and all other unit members that are here with us tonight to join me on the chamber floor in front for the reading of the proclamation. Thank you all for coming. You all look absolutely fabulous. I love your red shirts. So I am going to read a proclamation in honor of your anniversary. "City of Peoria Proclamation." Whereas, the first words of the American Legion Auxiliary preamble are "For God and country." Members pledge to foster patriotism, preserve and defend the Constitution, promote allegiance to God and country, and uphold the basic principles of freedom of religion, speech, and press. And whereas, the American Legion Auxiliary members are veterans, military, or direct family members of those who are serving or have served during times of conflict protecting our freedom. And whereas, the Auxiliary of the American Legion through its over 8,000 units and more than 600,000 members throughout the United States, provides millions of volunteer hours supporting veterans, military, families, and communities, and together they embody the spirit of America that prevails through war and peace and solidly stands behind the American ideals. And whereas, the John J. Morris Unit 62 in Peoria, Arizona, with nearly 800 members, has been nationally recognized for its contributions to veterans, military, families, and communities, and is an integral part of the American Legion Auxiliary in Arizona and the United States. And whereas, having been founded on November 10th, 1919, the American Legion Auxiliary will celebrate its 100th anniversary in 2019 during the American Legion Family Fall Conference held annually in Tucson, Arizona. Now, therefore, I, Kathy Carlet, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Arizona, do hereby proclaim November 10th, 2019, as American Legion Auxiliary Centennial Day, and urge all people of Peoria, Arizona, to celebrate the accomplishments of the American Legion Auxiliary, the Department of Arizona, and Unit 62, and consider volunteering in support of veterans, military, families, and youth. In witness thereof, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Peoria, Arizona, to be affixed this first day of October, 2019. Kathy Carlet, Mayor of Peoria, thank you.
I would just like to thank the Mayor Carlet for having us here and doing our 100-year celebration, anniversary, and thank you all.
Adrina, did you want to say something? You don't have to. That's all right. That is all right. I don't mean to put you on the spot. I thank you all very much for coming and for everything that you do for our city and for our country. Thank you. Now give that to you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have you already done photos, or you want to do one now?
I've got one.
You have enough? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oops, I walked away. Can I hand it to you?
Sure.
All right, we will now move on to the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine or have been previously reviewed by the city council and will be enacted by one motion unless a council member requests an item to be removed and considered in the normal sequence on the agenda. Counsel, are there any items to be removed from consent? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion in a second. Counsel, please vote. And the consent agenda passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is call to the public for non-agenda items. If you wish to address the city council, please complete a speaker request form and place it in the bin next to the speaker's podium. I have received one request to speak from a Mr. John Forsythe. If you would, Mr. Forsythe, are you here? If you would kindly come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to speak, sir.
Good evening. My name is John Forsythe. You want my whole address?
Whatever you'd like to give.
27605 North 85th Drive, in the Mesquite District.
Oh, okay.
I'm here to speak. Last time, I was put down towards the end of the agenda, not the front side, so excuse me if I stumble for words a little bit. I expect my government to be responsible, respectful, and ethical. I drive around town all the time. Your city workers are amazing, except your police department. I believe your police department doesn't believe they should follow the laws. Yesterday, I followed one of your officers. I was just having, just happenstance, driving down I-17. He was going to 200 West Jefferson, which is the municipal building, doing 20 miles an hour over the speed limit, and kind of blew through a red light. I filed a complaint with your PSU unit yesterday. Your lieutenant and I have a pretty good relationship, unfortunately. However, I think the citizens of Peoria, since I am one, deserve a government that leads by example. I believe that it is the government's responsibility to earn the respect of the citizens. When I witness police officers not obeying the laws that all the rest of us in this room and beyond this room are expected to do, it's a bad situation. When the government can't follow its own rules, anarchy kind of exists. Lord Acton said, you know, "Power tends to corrupt. Absolute power corrupts absolutely." You know, I just want, you know, what I expect out of my government, as I said, responsible, ethical, and respectful. And I don't believe the Peoria, and it's just not the Peoria Police Department, I'm also visiting another city council tomorrow, I just believe government needs to lead by example. And I think that's extremely important for the citizens, that they see their government just not doing what it should, doing what it has to do. It is for, of, by, and for the people, not of, for, and by the government. So what I'm asking you, I've talked to the police, I'm asking you to follow up and make sure that your government does what it should do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. All right, we will now move on to reports from the city manager, Mr. Tyne.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you briefly. We have three different items that we wanted to speak on. And the first is recognition, some acknowledgement of some of our amazing employees in the street-sweeping area, individuals. So I am going to ask that our Public Works Operations Manager, Janet Ramsey, come down to talk a little bit about these employees who are here in the audience today. We have such a great story to tell about our street sweeping operation that through their hard work, we have seen amazing efficiency improvements in the last couple of years, increasing the street cycle, sweeping cycles that we have, as well as reducing citizen complaints. Just some really great stories that I know that Janet can elaborate on.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's not news to you that we have a great team here in Peoria. In fact, you frequently take the time to call out examples of excellence in the organization, so we thought you would enjoy hearing about this one as well. We've had four sweeper operators, including the lead, since 2008. Even as the city continued to grow, keep in mind that not only do our operators do regular route sweeping, this team also responds to cleanup after accidents and spills. So it's understandable that when street sweeping cycles extended from six to eight to nearly 12 weeks, as we grew and stayed with the same four operators, same number. But the team takes a great deal of pride in serving our residents, and they weren't happy with the 12 weeks. So the team, along with the supervisor, Adam Stapleton, they brought some new tech to our team, including GPS location to better run regular routes, avoid garbage days, the twice-a-year bulk trash now, and incorporate the most efficient responses to emergency sweeps. They added some new equipment. By the way, all but one of our street sweepers are grant-funded. And they committed to a solid program of maintenance. But the real results came from the commitment of this team. They show up every day with great attitudes and the drive, literally, to do more and better. While reviewing the data recently, I noticed that our residential sweeping cycles have steadily decreased, and they are currently back down to near 2008 levels. With the same number of operators, it's an impressive 40% increase in the level of service, just based upon frequency, not taking into account the area that we've added to the city. When I told Public Works Director Kevin Burke about this, I suggested it was exciting, you know, riot-in-the-street kind of news. Kevin, you know, he's a kind of a buzzkill, so he said instead that we should probably just share with the city manager. But Kevin clearly shares my enthusiasm and the great work in maximizing efficiencies to provide the excellent service to our citizens and the team that epitomizes that. So I'd like to introduce to you the team now, if you guys would join me, please. This is Lead Equipment Operator Domingo Cadena. The one and only infamous Charlie Matos. Art Vosquez. And their supervisor, Adam Stapleton.
Congratulations to all of you. Thank you so much for your efficiencies and for, obviously, how much you love your work. We appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very appreciate you taking the time to come as well. Also, just in your agenda calendar, you will see the 2020 council meeting calendar is presented for your information. And note that there will be only one meeting that is scheduled in the months of August and November, and then, of course, having the standard break, the summer break that we have. The council meeting calendar appointments will be sent to you reflecting this schedule, so just to be aware of that.
Thank you.
And then the last item I had was just our video. We have about a two-and-a-half, three-minute video highlighting the upcoming special events here in the city. That includes the Peoria Film Fest, the Gain Public Safety Night, the event of Explore the Library, which has some fun images you'll see, and Peoria Country Fest, and the Halloween Monster Bash. And I'd like to thank our communications office for really, they're so good at capturing the energy and enthusiasm of these events, so thank you very much for that effort. And that is all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll now hear reports from our city council, and we'll begin with Youth Council Liaison, Great House.
My school, Glendale Prep, we started a fall food drive about a week ago, and we're working with Gathering Humanity, and all the stuff we collect will be donated to refugees who are relocated in the Phoenix area, which is a really cool opportunity for my school. And then the Youth Advisory Board, on October 11th, will be attending the Youth, the West Valley Youth Conference, and will get to collaborate with different youth committees from the valley, and we're really looking forward to it.
Good. Thank you very much. Councilmember Patana.
Thank you, Mayor. On Wednesday, September 18th, I attended the park-and-ride ribbon cutting at 83rd and Grand Avenue. It's really quite a nice area. They have bike racks there that completely cover the bike. You can put your backpack in there and a helmet, no fear of it getting stolen. And they have a special pavement that actually doesn't hold water. We had a fire department come out and spray it, and I don't know where the water goes, but it doesn't stay on the pavement, so it's really pretty cool. It's only about 30 feet away from a bus stop, so it's got covered parking. It's to promote public transportation, and I think it's going to do just that. Thursday, September 19th, Thomas, Jenna, and myself attended the Luke West Valley Council out at the Luke Air Base. It's an opportunity for all the elected officials and Luke officers and enlisted men to get together, talk about how Luke can help the West Valley and how the West Valley can help Luke. It's a great meeting. The jet noise always happens to be a topic of conversation, and they always address that, and they try to be good neighbors, so it's a good meeting. Thursday, September 19th, I also attended the public mural dedication at the Westbrook Village Trailhead. You know, it wasn't that long ago when that was just an empty field. It had a half-burned-out house. It was, I think chronic audio was in there for a while, then it mysteriously burned down halfway. And I used to have to send code officers out there once a week to take out the homeless people that were squatting in that particular house, so now it has a, it's a trailhead, now it has a Ramada. It's beautifully landscaped. It's lighted. It's got a water fountain for people and for dogs. And now we have public art. And in that area, there's a lot of grays and light browns, which is typical of the desert, but this particular mural is, it's blue and purple and pink and green. It's just really gorgeous, and it's great public art, and it just adds more beauty to that particular area. And on Thursday, again, on September 19th, Daniel and myself attended the Westbrook Village HOA grand opening for the New Lakes Pool. It really did an amazing job. It looks like a resort pool, and the place was crowded with people when we were there that evening, and it's a great addition to Westbrook Village. That's all I have. Oh, I want to congratulate Janet Ramsey and your entire team for the incredible work they do every day. Thank you, and thank your team. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Finn.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick items. Reminder, the big trash pickup is coming through Poliverty District at this time, so if you put some really good stuff out there, you won't even need to wait for the city to come get it. People just come around and pick it up for you. It's kind of a cool little service. And also, a reminder that there is going to be an election coming up for the local school district. It's a mail-in-only, so when you get that mail-in ballot, don't be thinking that you can go to the polls to cast your vote. It is mail-in-only, so it won't tell you how to vote, but please make sure that when you get that ballot, you do vote. That's all you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to add to the public mural dedication that I was also attended. It was incredible. I also, I want to add that it was all young ladies that were actually teamed up to do that art. It was unbelievable creation, but what really struck me was the story behind it. And it's just so personal when these artists share their souls with us and put their heart and thoughts into a project like this, but it's worth seeing, and it was, I was so thrilled to be there and be part of that dedication. Over the last couple of weeks, I got to visit Liberty High School and do red days with the students there, and that's just, they kind of took away their free time and then brought speakers in, and I was one of the speakers. So I didn't know what I was walking into, just knew that I was taking away free time from these high school students, so it was kind of horrifying. But, because they were trying something new, and I actually had about 150 students pass through this session, and we were talking about different things and focusing a lot on communication and how to, you know, build healthy relationships and time management and leadership, and some of the challenges that they face, which are very similar to the same challenges that we all still face in leadership. But I want to share a quote that one of the kids shared with everyone in that particular group, and it just reminds me how important it is to spend time with these young folks because, boy, they help us all become better, and there's so much that we can learn from them. But he said, "Never cast a shadow over anyone unless you're the one providing the shade." That came from a junior, and I thought it was so profound, and it was just a really, really good experience, and I'd like to say I think I got more out of it than any of them, but I want to thank Liberty High School for bringing me into their classroom and being part of that program and launching something new there. Also got to spend a morning at West Wing Elementary with the Peoria Pioneer Lions Club, and we did the Friendship Bench dedication there, and it's just wonderful what they're doing in the schools by bringing in these friendship benches to promote kindness and support for one another. And I know some of the other council members have been doing this as well, and it really is a strong message, and it was just such an honor to be part of that. I want to congratulate all of the Public Works street sweepers, but not just the street sweepers. It's awesome that you're being recognized today. Your brooms are really special. But all of you are such an important part of our city and the work that you do. You are truly those hidden heroes that work through some very challenging situations when we have issues and storms and all of that, but it's not said often enough. Thank you so much for all that you do, and congratulations, especially to all of you today for taking such pride. It's really important keeping our streets clean. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor. Janet, to your and to your team, congratulations, well-deserved, and just keep up the great work. On the 19th, I did attend with the Vice Mayor and Bill the art dedication over at Westbrook Village, and as they both said, it was just a phenomenal piece of artwork, and I do believe that they're doing another piece or several pieces in the near future, so I'd be looking forward to seeing some great additions to the community in the near future. On the 21st, I had the opportunity with Mayor Pro Tem to go to a couple of wall signings with Habitat for Humanity here in Old Town, and we're going to be welcoming, I believe it's five new families to Old Town here very shortly as they finish the completion of their homes. And then this morning, I got the invitation with Senator Rick Ray to attend a Capitol Scholar Program that he is initiating, where he's going to be getting young individual, high school students down to the Capitol and run them through mock bills from start to finish, and it was just a pretty interesting program that these young individuals had an opportunity to partake in, and I really look forward to working with him and hopefully getting some Peoria schools here in the near future. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it's been a busy two weeks since we've been here, and again, congratulations to our group that's been, I don't know, Jeff, I don't think they can do nearly as well with those brooms as they were doing with the street sweepers, so I don't know if it's a way of cutting back on expenses or what, but it may just be our way of saying we really, really appreciate you. be our way of saying we really, really appreciate you. And you really set an example, and all of our public workers, you're just the best. And Janet, to you, it goes to the leader. It goes right up there. Without a leader, you know, nobody can follow. So really, well-earned respect there. Yes, I enjoyed the ribbon cutting at the Park and Ride, I don't know, last Saturday or the week before, over in Old Town, Peoria, at 83rd and Peoria Avenue. And I was amazed at this concrete, pervious concrete. It just put the water there, and it just disappears. So we won't be having puddling there, and it also reduces the heat island effect. And the first day after we opened it, well, that would have been Sunday, but Monday, there were just a couple of cars there. It was almost like people were not sure if they were supposed to be there. And the rest of the week, it has been full. And I understand that a lot of people are being dropped off there to pick up their transportation. So it's really heading Peoria in the right direction as far as looking forward to transportation needs. And of course, I couldn't be prouder that it's located right here in Old Town. Another big event that we had last Saturday was Somos Peoria, and it was huge. I don't know who's here that would have that number. I haven't, Eric, do you know the number on how many, 12,000?
14, yeah.
I'm sorry, Chris, I didn't see you. 14,500 people descended on our little Old Town, and they were moving. There was music, loud music, may I say, and lots of food trucks and vendors, and it was just amazing. It was so friendly, and everybody had a smile on their face, little kids up to grandpas and grandmas. It was just an amazing celebration of our Hispanic heritage here. And also, I want to say thank you to Pogo people, because you were running people back and forth with our little Pogo buses. So parking really didn't appear to be a problem at all. And Mike, I think, mentioned the election coming up. I want to compliment and thank the teachers, the Peoria Unified School District teachers, because last Saturday, we had a knock on our door, and our dog went crazy, and then we settled him down. It was some teachers from Alta Loma who were what we call knock and talking. And when teachers put out the effort to get out there on their Saturday and talk about what they need and their needs, and of course, they already had our vote anyway, but it was just really encouraging to see that they're buying into this. And again, like Mike, I won't tell you how to vote, but please vote. It's a mail-in ballot, and so don't let it sit there for too long. Just vote yes or no, however you want, and mail that in. Two things coming up that I want to mention, I'm a teacher, okay? I almost asked for a show of hands, I won't do that. But if you think back, most of you probably studied the Arthur Miller play, The Crucible, in high school. Hopefully, you did. About the Salem witch trials, and that is being performed at our very own Theater Works, Peoria Center for the Performing Arts over here. I believe it starts the 11th, and it goes for two weekends. It's a powerful play, and Chris Hamby is directing, and he has some new ideas as far as a lot of the audience is going to actually sit on the stage, so they'll feel like they're part of the judges and the jury, and it should be really exciting. And when you're there at the Peoria Center for the Performing Arts, we have another mural, and it's called Curtain Call. And it was, it's about a nine-by-10 mural, ceramic mural, and it's called Curtain Call, which is very appropriate to be on the outside wall of the Theater Works building. And it was done by students from Studio 37, which is a student group that we connect with to do a lot of our art. I think, oh, Habitat. Yeah, I did, you jiggled my memory on that. What an amazing group. And just to clarify, we go and we sign the walls inside when they're laying on the ground, and we sign good wishes for that family. And then when they're put up and the drywall is put in, all those good thoughts and good wishes remain inside of that home. It's really a very moving experience. And lest you think that this is a free giveaway, it's not. They first have to work 400 hours of sweat equity to, just to get on the list, to get in line for a house. And then they will have a mortgage, and it will be a no-interest mortgage, and it will be one that they can afford. But they will be paying for that home. So it's just, it's an amazing group, and if you're looking for a volunteer opportunity, they say you don't even have to know a hammer from a saw. Probably a broom, too, you wouldn't have to know the difference. But you can go out there and volunteer. They can really use you, and you'll really feel like you contributed to the community and to society. And that really is all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Dunn.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate the Street Sweeping Department, Janet Ramsey and Public Works. Well done. Thank you. I attended the UCAN meeting on September 18th, and UCAN is an acronym for United Community Action Network. And it's comprised of community leaders. They bring together resources to improve our lives, build community within Peoria. And one of the speakers that was at this meeting, it was held at the Antioch Church of God in the Pine District, actually, and we attended, and there was a gentleman by the name of Terry, and he's with the National Alliance on Mental Illness. And he spoke, and I'll tell you, he's one of the most dynamic speakers that I have heard in quite a while. With mental illness, there's such a stigma associated with it. And he brought his own experience with his struggle, his family's struggle, and then he put, he introduced comedy even into talking about it, you know? Sometimes if you can't laugh at some of the stuff that you're dealing with, although there's a lot of very seriousness in this, too, but the work that they're doing to help people with mental illness and help destigmatize it, it was very powerful, and I'm really grateful to the people that put on this UCAN meeting, because it is bringing our communities together and providing help. I also wanted to mention quickly, we have an advisory committee for the Pine District. It's going to be meeting October 30th. It's going to be quarterly. And this is just an opportunity for all Pine District residents to come in with me, because, like I've always said, it's not just me, it's not, you know, just any of the council members or one citizen. It's locking arms together and working together. And so this committee is comprised of the residents to help come up with solutions to things that they want done in the Pine District, to be part of the solution. So they're helping advise me what we can do, and it's really their committee. So we're going to be meeting quarterly. I also met with a resident in the Pine District over in Country Meadows area and discussed block watch. We brought in the commander, and we're talking about crimes of opportunity versus, you know, just basic stuff, you know, like keeping your cars locked and not providing people opportunities to break in. Don't leave your laptop in or your purse, you know, lock it up or, you know, put it in your trunk. But it was really nice to have our police department there and meet with the resident. She was very grateful for the opportunity to get some of this one-on-one. And now she's going to be taking it back to her neighborhood and her block, and they're going to be doing, you know, a block watch and educating the neighbors. So it's community policing. Again, not one police officer, it's a whole community getting together. It's all of us together. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to call attention to the fact that October is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Here is a chilling statistic. Every minute, 20 people in the United States are victims of physical violence by an intimate partner. Every minute. The city of Peoria is committed to raising awareness and will be lighting City Hall purple starting tonight, so when you walk out of here, you will be able to see that. Domestic violence comes in many forms. It includes threats, stalking, cyber stalking, isolation, and many other forms of manipulation. So I encourage all of you to get educated and take a stand. You can go to peoriaaz.gov/victimsresources to find out how you can help or how you can get help. And with that, we are adjourned.